Is everybody here?
Yes.
Where's your candy? That's it? I brought the, I brought the noise-free candy. Ready? I called to order the special session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Saturday, July 27, 2024 at 4:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Badi Kiotis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kouyas.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Colianis.
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Here. Okay, let's go to right off to public comments. Are there any public comments on anything that's not on the agenda? The agenda has four items and they're all related to selecting a new city manager. So is, are there any public comments on anything that's not on the agenda? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on it, on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jump. We have four agenda items and the objective, the overall objective tonight is to select a new city manager. We have two finalists, Mr. Maxiner from Illinois and Mr. Rudd from Florida. I want to thank you both for being here. You're both excellent candidates and you're the two finalists out of about thirty-eight or forty that applied for the positions. So it'll be an interesting discussion this evening and, and I'm not sure how it's going to turn out, but as I, I find both of you qualified as far as city managers go. So good luck with your, this process. I also want to remind the residents, this is then city manager, and I talked about this a little bit, and Commissioner DiDonato, I did not talk to him about it, but he was part of it. This is the first time we're selecting a new city manager since 1999, which was twenty-five years ago. Since then, we hired, at that time, we hired a city manager who had been a department head in Hopewell, Virginia. There was not much department or city manager experience there, and that person lasted, I don't know, five or six years, and then eventually she moved on. And then we've had the gentleman sitting to my left that picked up as an interim and continued on, and he's city manager today. And Mr. Lacorius, I want to thank you for lasting that long in Tarpon Springs. And, and also, Mr. Lacorius's announced retirement date is January 2, 2025. So I want to let everybody know that as well. The first item on the agenda is candidate presentations. If either of you would like to make a presentation or just say a few words, you're more than welcome to. You don't have to, and you can take as much time as you'd like. I'll invite either one of you, Mr. Maxiner, Mr. Rudd, either one of you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for this opportunity. I feel delighted and honored to be a finalist in this election. I want to thank the staff for the great tour and this process being so smooth for us. We had a great tour, a very comprehensive tour of the city yesterday, and then last night with the public. The public was very gentle to us, and I appreciate that. We had a good public question and answer period. And then, and then today, meeting each of you, the opportunity to meet with you and share my, my personal things about my life and my passion for working with communities to revitalize and redevelop, and I look forward to having the opportunity to work with you in the future in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to just take a moment to thank the staff and elected officials and the community for hospitality, for the welcome yesterday and last night, and then again today. It was good to have those discussions with you to learn, learn a little bit more about what your expectations might be. Just as a refresher, I'm from Illinois, spent, I was born there, raised there, spent my entire career there. Thirty-two years in this profession, twenty-one as a chief administrative officer, all of that in Illinois. I've served in communities between sixty-five hundred population and a hundred and fifty thousand population. The largest community I served in as the chief administrative office, officer was about forty-three thousand. So just a couple of quick comments here. I was born into a family that values public service highly. So my daughter, my sister, my grandfather, aunts and uncles. My father was a firefighter. He unfortunately passed away on duty in 1990. I've always striving to the ideals that he set forward, the standards that he set forward. He was a quiet servant leader. He was the one you turned to whenever things started to go bad. Regardless of rank, they kind of turned to him. He even keeled, and he was a leader. So I've always tried to aspire to that type of, of leadership. So I try to serve with, with humility. That's one of my key traits, I hope. One of my favorite sayings is there's two types of city managers. There's those that are humble and those that are about to be. So I would much rather be the, the humble one on the front end. So we talked a little bit about my management style, collaborative, open, calm, even keeled. I don't get too excited about things, but I am reserved, a little quiet. I had a colleague's reference check. She suggested that, like the old E.F. Hutton commercial, when he, when Doug talks, people listen. Maybe I'm showing my age with that commercial, but that's quite a while ago. Regarding your community, you have lots to be proud of here. From what I have seen, your authenticity and your heritage, you've been true to that and you've worked to protect that. You haven't let development overwhelm that, which is a task in itself. You're becoming a few and far between in that, in that regard. So I could sense the energy in the community and the engagement last night and walking around town, and I thought that was very, and very important. And I just wanted to say that I would like to be, if, if selected as your city manager, your next city manager, I would strive to be a strategic partner with the city commission and give you good information in a timely fashion so that you can make good decisions. And we can move forward to protect the community moving forward. So with that, if, if selected, I would be, I would be proud to serve this community to try to continue to preserve that heritage and to protect the way of life here. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for you two gentlemen, I, I've been asked to invite you to, to step out of the room while we deliberate, and I'm not sure, do we have a place? Now, you can object and you can stay, but it may, it may be a little more comfortable for the commissioners up here to talk about you without looking at you. Paul, you take care of it. Mr. Smith will take care of it. Thank you very much. Ms. Rudd, you could, Ms. Rudd, you can remain if you'd like. Oh, would you like to go with Mr. Rudd? Yeah, of course. Okay. Okay. Let's go to public comments. Public comments on any of the candidates or any, anything that you might wish to offer as far as what you see as a selection process, the important things that this commission should be looking at for a next candidate.
Peter Lackus, 514 Ashland Avenue. Before the selection was narrowed down to three, I looked at all five of the interviews. After that, I've looked at the three gentlemen at least twice, and then yesterday, again. If you look at what they said in their interviews, Mr. Maxiner, his first thing he said collaborative, team versus subordinate supervisor. And when Mr. Rudd, his answer for management style is collaborative, servant leadership, support staff and training and tools. So I don't think either one will be a bad choice for Tarpon. They're both qualified, they're certified, they're the type of quality people that we're looking for. But who's going to be the best fit for Tarpon? I would have to say Mr. Rudd would be because he's from Florida. He's been in Florida all his time during his tenureship through the progression. He's worked in small towns and larger places, but he already knows a large part of the lay of the land, what's going on with Florida, all of our crises with insurance and mandates coming down from Tallahassee. And I just feel there'd be a shorter learning curve in that regard. As far as their management skills, they both seem to be open to speaking to employees and allowing employees to have a direct conduit to them. I would hope that in your interviews, you found a way to see if it's a mesh with our employees. Because my biggest concern, and I've expressed it, you guys deal with the city manager, I know Costa does a little bit more, but in, in general, maybe a few times a week. Couple of phone calls, some emails, maybe an office visit. But the staff and employees deal with the city manager seven days a week, sometimes twenty-four seven. And who's going to be the one that staff is going to look at to follow their lead and willingly be willing to, as both of them have said, got on board through either education, training, or things of that nature? So not having been able to speak to them individually, I really can't comment on some of those of my thoughts, but maybe you've got a gleaning into that. And I just would like to add one more thing. You mentioned ninety-nine when Ellen was hired, and she actually lasted ten years to two thousand. And I was on the board when she left, and there were some issues with regards to how she was looking to progress her chain of progression in her career. But I have to say, looking back, even though she never was a city manager, she came from public works, she accomplished a lot of things that we can look back at that were successful. So I would have to say, don't overlook the fact that someone hasn't been a city manager for a long period of time. Other experiences can lead to that. Also, as far as Mr. Rudd being from a redevelopment background, we here in Tarpon treasure what we have, and instead of just rampantly building, we need to start looking at redeveloping corridors. It was mentioned at the meeting about the South Pinellas area, that area needing to be looked at and developed. Though I think someone with redevelopment attitudes and what one of them mentioned in their interviews, the lens they look at, I think that would be, at this point in our time, our best fit. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Carol Mick, seven thirty-five Chesapeake Drive in Tarpon. I went to the event last night and listened to all of the discussion and asked a few questions myself. I was very impressed with Douglas Maxiner. I thought he came off incredibly professional and kind. So they sort of balanced out in that way. I do think that coming not from Florida can be a real asset, namely to bring new eyes to our community. And I'm sure that his learning curve will be short. He's been doing this for a long time. I'm sure he's already boned up on the issues in Florida. So I wanted to say that I would vote for him. I think that he would bring a real considered professionalism to our town. I think that one of the things that we focus on is Tarpon. But we have to remember that Tarpon is part of Pinellas County. And Pinellas County is incredibly active and has very strong leadership throughout the county. And I think that when we look at a city manager, we have to look at two things. One is how they'll serve the city, and two, how will they serve the county and be able to bring resources to our town? And it's very, very competitive to do that. And I think Douglas Maxiner would be incredibly good at doing that. So I wanted to put my views into your considered opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mick. Is there anyone else? Ms. Menino?
Denise Menino, four seventy Cypress Street, Tarpon Springs. I don't feel for you guys. This is a very challenging decision because both of these men are very qualified. I have to say, in search of our new city manager, I've really appreciated the public process and the opportunity to view the screening interviews initially and read the resumes and gain a sense of each candidate's style of management, which I feel are really critical to the vital position of city manager and our city government. I agree with what Carol said. I agree with what Peter said. I mean, this is a very, very tough decision. But at this moment in our city's journey with the new strategic plan, the comprehensive and the sustainability plans, and in their early stage of implementation, I value a city manager with exceptional experience with staff, with community, and with the ability to listen to the public. And that kind of, you know, seems like the person that has had a lot of experience might fall into that category. But at the same time, they're both excellent. They both have unique strengths. Douglas Maxiner has held an administration position in larger city government, and he clearly expresses his understanding of human dynamics and the needing to be artfully balanced in order for every stakeholder to be heard. And I really value that. But I also really value that Charles Rudd is already a Floridian. He knows the culture, he's worked with the diversity in his community, and he has the capacity to grow with the city at this exciting turning point. And he's only applied to Tarpon Springs, valuing this as his first and only choice, and we'd be growing together. But like I said, I don't envy your decision. It's a very tough one. They're both exceptional, and I think that we were really lucky that people like that came here and that through the process, you whittled them down to the ones that we could all really be proud of as candidates. So I'm certain that you're going to make the best decision for Tarpon Springs, and the best that I can do at this point is just hold space for your wise guidance because I know that it's going to be a challenging discussion, and I know that there's a lot to consider. And everyone that has already expressed their views has really valid points. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Menino.
Katie Taylor, nineteen ninety-one Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs. I also listened to, went to the meeting last night and heard both candidates, which both gentlemen seem to be very nice men, and I listened to their interviews on YouTube. I would be leaning more toward Mr. Rudd because he seemed to have more experience with revitalization, neighborhood revitalization. So he's worked with communities, he worked with diverse groups. Mr. Maximer didn't seem to have that experience to me from what he was explaining last night. And Mr. Rudd is, he, he has redevelopment experience, and his, the way he spoke just made me feel like he would be a person that willing to listen to the community, listen to all communities, not just one or two, everybody. I liked his views on how would he handle implementation of a new system, new software, how he would treat long-term employees to bring their salaries up to, to standard with new employees that, that just got the job. It was just, he, he has my vote as far as, as a person that I think would be better for this city. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Are there any other public comments?
Kristy Howard, nine one five Bay Shore Drive. While I believe that we are very fortunate to have two qualified candidates, I see a better fit with Mr. Rudd. Well, his experiences within a smaller community, I think that working with a smaller budget is actually more challenging. The smaller budgets that he has had to work with then make him scrappier. And when I look at what has happened within Crescent City with their small budget, it's clear that he knows his way around a grant. This is important to me as I see how our spending has escalated in recent years and the looming needs we have on our budget horizon. While Tarpon is a bigger city population-wise, we are quite small in terms of how we operate. And for better or worse, we've managed to retain a lot of the everyone knows everyone. And I think Mr. Rudd will understand and work within our dynamic the best. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Zev Atkinson, six Woody and money Sworn Street. Like everyone said, I do not envy your, what you're getting ready to go through, but I think this is a good point to say that cities can do this themselves. You didn't go out and hire some high-priced firm to give you sixteen thousand people that you didn't have to pay them to whittle down, you did it yourselves. So I think you should be applauded for that. In my estimation, and Mr. Lacorius, I think, has done a great job, so it's no disparagement on him, but I think the person that has had the large-town experience or large-city experience can learn the small-town experience and manage from there and, and help the city grow if the intent is to grow or to redevelop or whatever. So that, that would be the person that I go for. Again, I don't envy what you're getting ready to go through, but I admire the fact that, that the city has done it themselves as opposed to hiring another firm to come in and do it.
Thank you, sir. I think you just got a compliment, Paul. Anyone else?
George Aner Francis, fifteen Athens Street. First, I just wanted to say that, and I heard this from other city staff, that I'm very proud of our city staff and our city, our community for the, just the entire process this time. And I, I can't really describe the, the excitement that you could just feel from yesterday. It's just the opportunity for, you know, it's like everyone said, growth and a new, just, just refreshing, refreshing to have a, a fresh start. At the same time, you know, they know they have big shoes to fill. And I'm also proud of the BOC for, you know, making the right choice last time so that we could do the process, you know, the correct way, which we clearly have, you know, as you can see from yesterday and the meetings prior, obviously, the transparency is working this time. So my choice is, is Charles Rudd, and I picked Charles Rudd from the nine immediately. And I actually had called him and talked to him. One of the, one of the conversations I had with him, he was actually on his way to Tallahassee. And that just reminded me, you know, our focus is redevelopment. You know, it just reminded me of the conversations that, you know, Frank has said about when him and Anita used to go, and even Commissioner Kouyas mentioned at one of the charter revision meetings that, you know, we need to, we need to have people that have those resources and those relationships with Tallahassee and other areas in the, you know, the community and, you know, the community that can help us, you know, best facilitate with our redevelopment efforts. The, you know, with Maxxner, you know, they both answered, you know, questions last night and were very, you know, competent. You know, with Maxxner, you know, I did some research. Some articles about him. And he does kind of have like a no-nonsense attitude. And while some people like that, I don't feel like, I think, you know, Tarpon, as well as other communities, we have a lot of nonsense. And you kind of have to deal with that. You just can't say like, no, we're not going to do that. You'll just make, you'll make enemies really fast. So it's just part of the job, nonsense. And the biggest thing, and I think that you'll hear that from, you've already heard it from many people, is growth. You know, a lot of people talk about, we don't want to change and everything. And it's change and growth are not the same thing. You know, we are constantly growing. We need to, we need someone who can grow with the city. And I think Charles Rudd has that opportunity. He, you know, he is not looking for a job anywhere else. If he doesn't get this, he's just going to stay at Crescent City. You know, and Charles, Maxxner is looking at, which is fine, there's nothing wrong with that, other places in Florida, which are still active searches that are a little bit behind our search right now. Another committee, another community didn't, they actually agreed from their Board of Commissioners, they wanted a 5-0 vote. And they chose him. They had 3-0. But because they didn't get five, they didn't choose him. So and it's nothing against that, but just saying that, you know, he's looking for places in Florida. And Charles Rudd, I think, you know, we always say how special we are. And I think he recognizes that. He's choosing us and only us to grow. And he's done a lot in these little cities. And I know he doesn't have experience with like larger cities. But he's kind of done what he can in those other communities. You know, he's rebranded Crescent City. He's got a lot of experience with diversity. So and I think that's really going to, you know, come in handy. And then just, like I said, everyone I've talked to, that was the first comment I've heard for Maxxner. Not, no one said anything bad about him that I've talked to, but everyone has chosen, it's been close, but that they thought Charles Rudd was best for Tarpon. Not necessarily the better, maybe, city manager overall with experience, but the best fit for our town. And that's really, you know, your job tonight. And unlike everyone else, I don't, you know, not envying your job. I think your job is pretty easy tonight. That is your job to do. So, you know, I don't think it's that tough. But and I would just like, you know, again, everyone I've spoken with, I'll just be five seconds, has said that, has picked Rudd. And a wise person at the Charter Revision Committee once said, "The collective public will always make the right decision." So I think it's pretty easy tonight. But, you know, you've always done a good job with your voting regardless of the nonsense. So thank you.
Are there any other comments? Mr. Jump, any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting and go to the commissioners. What I'm going to ask is, you can, any commissioner can do whatever he wants. But I'm going to ask as a courtesy, just let's go through a first round and give us your thoughts on both candidates. And then we can see where everybody stands on that a little bit. And then maybe go from there on a round two. I'm sure it's going to take more than one round to come to closure on this thing. And then at some point, I'll ask for a motion. But I would ask not there to be a motion until everybody's had an opportunity to say their, what they've got to say. So I'm going to go through seniority. Vice Mayor Kulaas, I'm going to let you begin, please.
First, I just want to thank staff. This is one of the most neutral processes I've been a part of. And I'm very thankful for Mr. Paul Smith, Mrs. Jane Niffen, and the rest of the staff who did a great job in screening and interviewing the applicants. I think both candidates are exceptional. They come with a little bit of different expertise. I like Mr. Maxxner for his finance background, ability to look at, manage from a bigger city. But at this current time, I would like to support Mr. Charles Rudd. There's a lot of things in his application and during the interview process that caught my attention, mainly speaking with a lot of Main Street experience as well. And not so much where it comes from, you know, the city manager experience. We understand that there's been a little bit less than the other candidate. But we know our Main Streets need to be looked at between the SpongeDocks and downtown. He's very familiar with redevelopment and redevelopment planning. And I think we're at a crucial point in our city's history and point in time in government in which we build on this foundation that this commission has set. And I was able to go through certain portions of the comp plan to show that the hard work that planning and zoning had done to make the categories easy for future boards to look at when making decisions and for the community to be able to hold the commission accountable when looking at applications because that's what it's really all about. I like the aspect in which in his resume, there's a lot of updating to the land development code, code of ordinances. And that basically means to follow through with what we've pretty much started. And another thing that's really caught my eye was that as an Economic Development Director for the city of Newport Ritchie. And the city of Newport Ritchie may only have a population of 16,000. But the nearby surrounding areas make Newport Ritchie much bigger than what that 16,000 Mark states. And when we have an opportunity to have someone who's familiar with this area, the Gulf Coast region, who's, has an ability to, with the experience of an area that's a river-based area that has a historic downtown like Tarpon Springs, I don't want to take the opportunity to pass up on that. And I think we should try to, as a community, embrace it with his experience in working with CRA and other organizations to help build that community enthusiasm and bring some life to the community. I think he's a safe pick for staff, for the community. I did like his ability to communicate. I felt that he was very approachable from everyone, from every aspect. And I just want to make sure I don't miss any. And when it comes to very familiar with the master planning and pretty much what we have started for this community. And as of right now, that's why I would like the support. And I would ask if, when the time comes, being the vice mayor, that I do have the opportunity to make the first motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, Mayor. Very interesting to listen to people coming up and speaking about their interpretation and their impression of people. Let me retract what I just said because I did want to thank, I spoke with Paul earlier today. And I did want to put you up on a pedestal, you and Jane. You both did an amazing job. They handheld us every step of the way. Not that we needed it, but they did handheld us. They actually, just so you know, gave us a list of questions to even ask just in case we didn't want to do that part of the work. But so I commend you for it. And I did cross out the ones I thought were inappropriate to ask because I knew the answer. But honestly, I thank you for all you did and doing. It was, it was a different idea when you get to speak to people one-on-one for 45 minutes than it is to have a town hall meeting. I did follow up. I listened to all of the town hall meeting comments that people were making. So I was kind of up to date on what the impression was. I did want to respond. I know somebody brought up that they can get up on issues very quickly. And that was one of my questions that I just wanted you to know. I asked Mr. Maxxner if he was familiar with Florida law. And he said he was not. And I would just tell you, one of the funny comments I make up here is I'm doing this two and a half years and I'm dangerous. And why I say that is because there are a lot of things you have to learn about Florida law before you can run a city. They're both two very good candidates. I was impressed with both of them. Any choice that somebody would make, I would pretty much support because they both are very knowledgeable, approachable people. As far as, I also wanted to make one more comment regarding representation. We have our own representation. And if DeSantis ever signs my name to it, we will have representation on Forward Pinellas. I don't think that's what the city manager does. City manager does other things. But I just wanted to clarify because we didn't have representation for many, many years. They both impressed me. I asked very, I didn't follow your questions, Paul. I hope you're okay with that. But I've interviewed many, many people. And you develop a bit of a flow and you let people speak. I didn't have that with Mr. Rudd. With Mr. Rudd, within the first few minutes, I got a feel that he was more suited for many reasons that I don't want to spend the 45 minutes that I spoke to him about. But I asked him a very unique question that, I mean, I don't know what the others spoke about, but I asked him to interview me because I was done with the questions of what I got from him. And it was very interesting because he pulled his phone out and he had six or eight questions all about, you know, what a commissioner would want to see in a city manager, what a commissioner would want, what future we would have here in town. And I was so much so impressed by that. It's always good to get people's side of what they would like, what you would like that city manager to be. So and I'm taking nothing away from either candidate. They are both great. But I'm going to initially now go with Rudd. Charlie Rudd, I was very comfortable with. I've asked him about hurricane. I've asked him about flooding. I asked him about, he asked about the CRA area that we're adding on. And I said, it's a different CRA. But it, you know, we talked about the reasons of why it came about. You know, it's funny that every commissioner that you would be here listening to had a different set of questions and answers that they felt most comfortable asking. I don't think anybody up here has had the same interview. We didn't follow any routine. And, you know, I'm impressed to hear the input of what Commissioner Kulaas said about his interview because he went after a certain thing with the comp plan. And, you know, and I kind of did a different one. And I'm sure I'm going to hear a different one from John and a different one from everyone else. So it was just, it was a great experience. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank all of the people that came yesterday to listen to the city manager candidates. This is a great town. I love the town. And I got a feeling that Charlie Rudd would be, he said he's excited to come here. And it was a lot of things that I could sit and tell you as it was going on. I just got a very really good vibe that that was the person. And I want to thank you, Denise, for your comments. It was very nice what you had to say and everybody's input. I really appreciate that. And thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kulaas.
Let me start by stating that both candidates are excellent. I believe either of them has the requisite skills to be successful as our next city manager. Obviously, a special thanks to Paul Smith and Jane Niffen for their systematic and analytical methodology and it worked wonderfully that brought us these two candidates. They should consider starting their own headhunting firm. There's a lot of money in it and you're good at it. So you might want to think about that in your next career. Getting back to the candidates, as I stated, they are both qualified based on their experience or they wouldn't have gotten to this point. Like this, like we said, there's, you know, 38 or whatever number of candidates, and it got down to these two. So they should both be proud of themselves. And they are both nice gentlemen. They were easy to have conversation with. And I would enjoy working with either one of them. So please understand, what I say about the candidate that I favor in no way is a condemnation of the other person. I favor one over the other by a hair. I am prepared to vote for the hiring of Mr. Charles Rudd as our next city manager. I started both my interviews by letting each of the candidates know that they both met the basic criteria of education and experience to be our final two applicants. However, my decision would be based on fit. The question most important to me is, which candidate is the best fit for our community? It is an advantage that Mr. Rudd is already a Floridian. He has dealt with the effects of hurricanes, heat, and the other issues specifically affecting us. Understanding our area and having lived here is a big positive to me. I see a better possibility for a longer tenure with Mr. Rudd being, having been a natural Floridian. He has a strong planning background with his time in Pasco County on Main Street development and property redevelopment. We had a very nice conversation about our objectives as a community, about controlling growth and maintaining our small-town charm and heritage. He was, as the commissioner said, he was excited about helping us with fulfilling that vision. I understand that he currently manages a small town with only 20 employees reporting to him. I'm not sure this is a big disadvantage. We have a department head type of system here in Tarpon Springs. Only 12 people report directly to Mark LaCouras. The department heads oversee their employees. Charles had to wear many hats while in Crescent City. So not having as many, having department heads to lean on, he had to get his hands, you know, into the dirt. He told me stories about being out there after storms, moving debris with his mayor. The staff will naturally, a concern of mine is the staff will naturally be nervous and apprehensive about a change after having worked under the same city manager for many years. Mr. Rudd described a solid approach to working through the change in a way that will move the staff from nervousness and apprehension to engagement and excitement. And I was really happy to hear that. Charles has made a commitment to being green as well on a personal level. He's told me about the things he's done on a personal level to be part of the sustainability program. So our sustainability committee and our staff should find him a willing partner in fulfilling many of those initiatives. On a personal note, I can see Mr. Rudd blending into our community. He appears very approachable with an infectious smile. I can envision residents being comfortable speaking to him at a local coffee shop or a restaurant. Charles' wife, Valeria, was born in Brazil. I think her ethnic background will help her assimilate well into our multicultural community. I see them both being active in our community in many of our programs, including the Rotary or the Elks or the AHPA or the Merchants Association. I see them pitching in and being, again, part of our community. My main objective in interviewing these candidates was to be able to envision them in the role and hoping that they would be successful as our city manager. While having seen the proper qualities in both candidates, I favor Mr. Rudd. Thank you.
Mr. Di Delaro.
I don't really have anything left to say. They've already said it. I do, I'm excited today. This is...
This is gratifying to me because I do feel that this was a very transparent process up until today, but I think there were reasons for that as well. Commissioner Kulias, I'm sorry, I already have a deal with Paul and Jane. We're going out and do the road show. I can't say enough about you, Paul and Jane, jobs that they did. All the department heads, many of them were in the interviews personally. One thing I like about this process is that I've not heard anybody say they didn't get enough of information on these candidates. And I've not heard any staffer that works for the city that has said they didn't know or anything about our process, our candidates. We originally picked five and then we went to three. We lost one and we have two. And I'll tell you, I could work with either one of them. They're both exceptional, but it's the process that we went through to get there and I hope we never waste money again on headhunters because we've got the pattern. Paul and Jane, I'd like y'all to sit down and format that so that if ever down the road we need to do that again, you've laid out a map for us to follow because it couldn't have been a better process to me. As I said, I like both candidates. Mr. Maxiner is, exudes with professionalism and certainly with knowledge. And so did Mr. Rudd. However, being born and raised in the South, I am attracted to people that have a warmness about them. And I felt that that was Mr. Rudd. Just, he just opened, receptive, eager to contribute, eager to learn more. He's come a long way in his experience. I think that he will work well, not only with his commission, but more importantly, with our staff and our department heads. And that to me is, is good. One of the interviews, actually it was Mr. Rudd, we talked about the perception of the employees. We ended up talking both, Maxiner too, about what I thought of the department, the people that work here. And I told him I had complete confidence in them. And that I feel, I get emotional, sorry, that I feel that they did and have done a job every time we've asked them to do it. Because back in the past when I was here and at present when I'm here, they get the job done as long as they have some direction and the equipment and money to do it with. And I think Paul and Jane have proven that. It's, I can't thank either one of you enough, but I strongly support Charles Rudd. And I feel bad for Mr. Maxiner because he's certainly a good candidate, but my, the one feeling that I felt says we need to hire Mr. Rudd.
My turn. Paul, thank you and Ms. Niffen as well. I know she's home with an illness. Let me just leave it at that or else she'd be here. I also want to thank Irene and Michelle for kind of the background sort of work that you had to do to put a lot of things on for people. Paul and Jane were pretty much the face with the commissioners and Irene and Michelle made things happen behind the scenes so all this could take place. I want to thank them as well. Also want to thank the commission from getting from point A to point Z, I guess, right? We're here. So before I came to the meeting, I got a couple of emails from people who expressed their, you know, their support. And, you know, I'm not much of a gambling guy. I'm an engineer. So it's gotta be right or else, you know, I don't say, well, maybe it'll be right. You know, I just say, well, it's gotta be right. So, you know, their comments, they favored Mr. Rudd and I said, well, does it, you know, I went back to them. I said, does it bother you that, you know, it's a small town of 1,600 and 22 employees? And by the way, for the record, it's not a full-service town like Tarpon Springs is. It doesn't have a police department. It's got a one-person fire department and that one person is from the county. And there's a lot of things that are contracted out whereas we have very little that's contracted out. So project management, plans and things like that. Mr. Rudd has done that. Mr. Eisner, Mr. Maxiner has done it as a way of life in the three or four times that he's done as city manager. Also, the, I want to say that Crescent City is what I would describe as an agrarian environment. It's a little more rural, whereas East Moline, which is right outside Chicago, is a little more urban like you would have here as well, which is a big difference. And also there, I know that we mentioned diversity in Crescent City, but there's also quite a bit of diversity in East Moline as well, as well as a Greek community. And there's actually a Greek festival there that, in talking to Mr. Maxiner, he's attended that. So there's, you know, they're both pretty much evil, even on that. And I said that before I came here, I was gonna support whoever the majority of the commissioners would want to go with and that's what I'm gonna do. I'm not gonna choose between either one of them. I listened to what the residents were saying. I've talked to the city manager about it. It's pretty much 50/50 with him. We've listened to the staff. I think that informally, there was a little bit of a preference. Prior to them, they actually meeting face-to-face for Mr. Maxiner, this would have been out of the three, Mr. Gom, Mr. Maxiner, and Mr. Rudd. So, you know, I'm okay with any of them. The one question that, so everybody knows, from experience, honeymoons are very short for city managers. So, you know, they've got the commission to contend with who's ever selected. And this is kind of like a little bit of an editorial message on my part because I'm obviously the mayor, but I've also been in the city manager's seat as well. And the city manager's honeymoon, Mark Lacorius is the only one that's had several honeymoons. They go up and down, up and down. And, you know, when I came, I became the city manager, everybody remembered me as the little kid before I went into the Navy. And I was everybody's, you know, young Vatty Kyotis, the George U boy, which is my mom's side of the family. It was only a short time after that that I was the scourge of Tarpon Springs because then I would start saying, no, I can't do that for you. There's, you know, I don't have the authority to do that and why not and all this other stuff. So one of the candidates asked me, what do you see as my objective for the first six months? And I said, to survive the transition. I said, that's what you need to focus on, just surviving the transition and learning the system, what we've got in place. Everything's in place if you just follow the processes. They're good processes, the end result will be good as well. And so I think either one of them would be an excellent job in that regard. And, you know, I, again, I tend to prefer, at least since we haven't done this in 25 years, more of a sure thing as far as experience goes, but on the other hand, I'm comfortable with Mr. Rudd as well. But we'll see how it goes. I'm only gonna, the other part of this, the other variable in all of this is I'm only gonna be here another eight months or so. And so somebody else is gonna have to be here and there's gonna be some OJT with whoever it is, whether it's Florida law or whether it's some other aspect of Tarpon Springs that's not consistent with where they come from. So I just wish for my part, this commission well. And I just hope that, you know, I want to ask that everybody's patient in this transition and make it as comfortable for them. And I'm also asking the residents to do the same thing. Don't start calling with, you know, this and that right away. I'm not sure how it's gonna work. The other good thing is I'm not sure when a new city manager will come on board, but Mr. Lacorius's contract ends, as I mentioned earlier, January 2nd, 2025. He's still gonna be here. There's only one city manager and that's gonna be the person we select today and when they arrive. And then Mr. Lacorius is gonna be here if he's needed in terms of information, background, advice, whatever else at the beckoning call of the new city manager. And I know Mark's gonna be real good at that and so I'm kind of looking forward to that. So that, you know, I think the commission's done a pretty good job. I also want to thank former Vice Mayor Lunt, wherever he is. I know he was there last night, I heard, but he kind of resuscitated this whole process to get us to where we are today. So I want to thank him as well. I don't want to forget that. Is there any other comments? It seems like we've got four in favor.
I just have one thing. I failed to thank this commission. I know there were some skepticism in the beginning, but I again want to commend us for moving forward in the process that Paul and Jane carried us through. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments from anybody?
Yes, I just wanted to say, Mayor, no, I've often thought about how the last time I went around and I think I could have handled it a lot better and it took a lot of pressure at the time and I think it could have been, at least from my part, communicated much different and it's weighed on me for a long time. And I just thought this would be the perfect time to just send my apologies as how I acted. And I'm just thankful to be on this commission during this current time to help make a decision for the community. And I really think this process was, it was great all around. So just want to thank everybody from staff to the community and to this board. Thank you, sir.
Before we go to a motion, the last thing I wanted to say is when I came here, honestly, I initially I had wanted a unanimous vote for whoever is selected. And then looking at these, both these candidates, I honestly could not tell you how all this was gonna play out and I was just hopeful. But for me, whoever's city manager historically has always been important for that person to be, come in on a unanimous vote. So it's not a three, two. Everybody's behind him. They want him to succeed. So I think we're there now with this one, which I'm extremely happy about. And the other thing too is everybody needs to know, as I used to tell the commission way back when, nothing is forever. You know, they used to wring their hands over an ordinance, you know, what are we gonna do? I'm not sure about that. Look, pass the ordinance. If it doesn't work out, there'll be another opportunity in the future. You know, change it, whatever. So I think this is a bold first start for where we're going and I'm hoping, I'm wishing everybody well and good fortune with who we have. But remember, Tarpon is gonna be here, God willing, in another 100, 200 years and I hope St. Nicholas continues doing this thing and pointing the direction of the hurricanes this way, that way, and not this way. So anyway, I'm very pleased. I hope everybody, whatever anybody was saying about enthusiasm, electricity last night, I hope they sense the same thing here on this commission rather than us kind of rolling up our sleeves and duking it out. So Vice Mayor Kulias, you wanted to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to hire Charles Rudd as our next city manager.
Irene, I'll leave it up to you as to who second. Go back and listen to the video. Whoever did first, second is the one you can record. Are there any further comments?
Just take a moment to appreciate Mr. Lacorius, Mr. Mark Lacorius. He's been stand-up throughout this whole process. I think, I think he's even surprised how we all got along for so long as we did and this man really deserves a round of applause. And I'm just thankful that everyone's here and that we're all here together and really appreciate your service, Mr. Lacorius. Thank you.
Commissioner Kulianis, you've got your light on.
I did. Yeah, I want to reiterate that as well. I know we're gonna have time before Mark leaves to do our, you know, farewell and all get up and talk about how much we care about him. But, you know, I was actually speaking to one of the staff people about him and I was so impressed, and I still am, with how every day, he knows he's leaving and he knows he's being replaced, but every day he gets, shows up and he does what he thinks is the best for Tarpon Springs. He didn't, he doesn't kick the can, oh, there's a new guy coming out. I'm not gonna deal with that. I'll just let the new guy handle it. He doesn't do that. He has been a consummate professional. You know, again, we'll have time to get into the more mushy things, but no, really, he is, this process went so smooth primarily because of him. He has been great. And anyways, I, we'll have time for mush.
He's not gone yet. It's gonna be another month or two before the new guy gets here. I hope he gets here. So anyway, Mark, thanks. You know how, Mark and I, we have our differences, but we always put the city first. So that's all I've got to say about Mark. Yeah, Commissioner Eisner.
I can't resist. Before, before Kulianis speaks again, I want to have a whole box of Kleenex on Mark's desk.
I'm gonna do, Frank, go ahead.
I just want to thank Mark. I thank you personally. I've known you for over 40 years and what you've given our town is much.
You know, there's still two months to go, so everybody's attitude may change about it. That's the way it's been. Anyway, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulias.
Yes.
Mayor Vati Kyotis.
Yes, we have one other. We have one other motion that we need to, it's not on here, but it's, we talked about that. We need to authorize the city manager, Ms. Niffen, and our personnel director, Aaron Jackson, to determine salary, contract, and when his reporting date would be. Is that correct? Okay, anything else on that, Mark?
No.
Okay. Do you have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the commissioners? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulias.
Yes.
Mayor Vati Kyotis.
Yes. Okay.
Who said this was gonna be tough?
Let's go to staff board comments. Chief Young, got anything? Welcome back, by the way.
It's good to be back. Thank you.
Okay, anything? See you, Mayor Lacorius. Don't look so sad.
No.
Okay. And, oh, Paul, please, yes, Lacorius.
Just want to say thank you to each of the mayor and each of the commissioners. You've all been a pleasure to work with on this process and I have to say thanks for your comments to us for our work that we did, but I think I'd be remiss not to mention that I think just about every one of those good ideas you liked came from Mark originally. And I just think he was so gracious in helping us, guide us through this, that I just want to say thank you to him for that.
Commissioner comments. Vice Mayor Kulianis, do you have anything?
I just have a lot of mixed emotions and I'm just thankful we were all able to work together and be one as a community. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner, you got anything?
It's never a bad decision when it's a unanimous vote. So I want to thank everybody, want to thank everybody for their input. You know, like it was said a number of times, either candidate was just, either one would have done very well here. I think we chose accordingly and I'm just looking forward to working with them. And that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kulianis.
Yeah, I think the operative word today is excitement. I think we're all excited. I think the community's excited. Again, we've loved working all these years with Mark, but it's a new beginning and I think the staff should feel the same way. I think ever have to, ever, after having spoke with Mr. Rudd, I think he's going to make them comfortable. And I know that he's gonna have Mark's help in doing that as well. So I'm excited and I think you all are as well.
Paul, can you get the two candidates back in?
If we don't, they could see it on tape. Not a good way to find out.
I'd like everybody to stay here, please and... Would like everybody to stay here, please, and. They're listening in. Y'all can just hold on a second. I want to recognize the candidates one last time and thank them for being here. I, I asked Paul to bring y'all back in. I just wanted, I, I hope he shared the outcome with you. No? Mr. Rudd, we've selected you as the, the new city manager and I apologize for doing it in such open, I was hoping Paul would say something. But I want to thank both of you and extreme gratitude for having the confidence in Tarpon Springs to be here. Mr. Maxiner, I, I know from your record, you're an excellent city manager, a lot of experience and, and I wish you well in the future. I doubt that, given the need for good city managers around the country, there's not going to be any issue with you. I know we had talked about your retirement from East Moline and you're looking for another opportunity. You could very well be a city manager 20, 20 miles from here in one of our 27 cities in Pinellas County. So I, I wish you well on that. And Mr. Rudd, you had the confidence of the, of the commission of getting along with them. And Ms. Rudd, I welcome you as well. And so I want to thank, thank you both for being here. So if we can give them all a. Meeting adjourned at 5:36.